Pasco County Board of County Commission, 10:00 AM meeting of September 20th, 2022. At this time, please silence your, please silence your electronic devices and mute your microphones. Please rise for the invocation and pledge.
Oh merciful Creator, Your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for Your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of Your good gifts. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which He stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Here.
District Two, Commissioner Moore.
Here.
District Four, Commissioner Fitzpatrick. District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Here.
District Three, Chairman Starkey.
Here. Okay, now's the time for public comment. Citizens are given an opportunity to comment on any current or future agenda item coming before the Board and on any other business under the Board's purview. Today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we will take public comment from those who are here in person. Then we will take public comment from those who have pre-registered on a WebEx link and are currently on cue. We request that when you address the Board, comments are not directed personally against a Commissioner or team member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between Board members and the public. After stating your name and address for the clerk, a three-minute timer will be activated. After two minutes, a single beep will indicate you have one minute left. When your time is up, two beeps will sound and you should close your comments. WebEx participants will be disconnected automatically when their time is up. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We do. We have six people signed up in person. We have Russ Henderson, followed by Wanda Chastnoff, followed by Mitch Coburnick. So, Mr. Henderson?
Our screens continue to go on and off.
Good morning, honorable Commissioners. My name is Russ Henderson. I'm here on behalf of Nest Hockey Academy, which is a Christian hockey school in Wesley Chapel.
Sir, I just need your address for the record.
Oh, sorry about that. 9175 McKendry Road.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. We're located right in the middle of what will be the center of Future Connected City, the commercial district. We're very excited to be a part of it. I came here this morning for two reasons. First is to invite all of you to come out and visit our project, see what we're trying to do, see the type of school we have, and what we're trying to build. Pledges and prayers are every morning at 7:45, so it'd be great to have you there for that. Second, I'm here to offer clarity on our project. We have purposely kept the project a secret, so it's understandable why there may be some misinformation among staff, as well as the public, on where we're going versus where we began. So I just want to give a brief history of that. November of 2019, we were going to build a private ice barn just for my family. Once we were made aware of Connected City and where we would be inside the landscape of Connected City, we decided we were going to build something a little bit bigger for not just our kids, but for our community. We've since completed construction on our facility and received our CO late August. We submitted an MPUD rezoning, which we knew we had to do in March, and just because of staffing shortages nationwide in every industry, it's just taken a little bit longer than expected. Everyone we dealt with at the county has been fantastic. I can't, I don't have any begrudges against anyone. Everyone's been great. Mike Arbola's been fantastic. Sally Sherman is probably the sweetest person I've ever spoken to. So it's been very humbling to talk to a lot of these great people. So, thank you so much for that. I'm here to ask for help to try to get through our MPUD. The way it stands right now, under our special exception, we're allowed 20 people in our building. Our building per life safety is built for 892 people, but we understand we have a substandard road up front, and we are only allowed to do 20 people at a time inside of our building because of that special exception. So I'm asking for any help you guys can give us. To the best of my understanding, we are limited to that 20 because of the substandard road. We have paid our proportionary shares, but we're willing to give more. We have 150 feet of rideaway for Boya. Vision Road runs right through the back of our property. I'm happy to dedicate that to Pasco County if they can help us get our numbers up and get our students in immediately. We have a waiting list of people trying to get into the school, but we can still only serve so many. But we've already attracted, you know, hockey greats like Steven Stamkos, Victor Edman, Zach Bogosian. The Tampa Bay Lightning Group wants to support us because we've got a huge initiative to change girls' hockey. That may be the staple for girls' hockey in the South forever. But right now, we need your help. We need to get through the, through the special exception MPUD process. We understand the whole process, what we need to do. We're just asking for any help that any of our Commissioners can give us to help push us through that process so that we can kind of alleviate the capacity limit to move forward. So.
Thank you very much. I think I have an appointment set to come out and visit you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. And I look forward to seeing all of you folks whenever you have time. We know you're very busy. But thank you for hearing me this morning, and I'll talk to you guys soon.
All right. Thank you. Next, Wanda Chastnoff?
My name is Wanda Chastnoff. I live at 6608 Status Lane, Newport Ritchie. I live right off Green Key. I'm here about the flooding again. The TV cameras were out a week ago, filming us again and everything. I'd like you to know that I met with this gentleman here. I've been working with FIG out of the road and bridges. I want you to know, since I was here last time, I ain't had one phone call from not one person about none of it. This last time it flooded, all the traffic, don't do nothing but pushed the water back up my street and flooded my street up to my steps. At the entrance of my street, there ain't nothing but potholes now because the water will never go away because it floods. And FIG told me he got the okay from the city saying they did not have the equipment to do the work that needed to be done. I have chased FIG down through my neighborhood is how I find out the information. I have not been called not one time, and I don't deserve this. My taxes is current, my taxes is paid. I'm just like any other taxpayer. I don't deserve to have to wade into water up to my knees to get out of my house or anybody else. The man next door to me is a one-legged man in a wheelchair. He cannot do nothing but use his electric scooter.
Can you stay at the mic, please?
To get out of his, out of my street, okay? The man in the trailer park behind me, he's in a confined wheelchair. He's catheterized and everything. Can't even get in there when it floods. And I thought all the Green Key people would have been here this morning. They were supposed to be here. I'm told I'm not part of that grant. I want to be showed. If I'm not part of the grant that the Green Key got, I want to be showed. I've been told I'm not included in it. Why? I got flooded the whole damn way of Green Key. Right down it when it's flooded, when you can't even get out. Please, I want some help. I don't deserve this. I can't even clean my car. My car's a mud pit.
Thank you. Mitch Coburnick? And we did get, we do have a water project heading that way, right?
It's a big water project. We have over $2 million from the state, so we are working on it at a does cut time. It is a very low-level lying area that we're dealing with.
It's hard to, hard to keep the Gulf of Mexico back when you're that low. Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Coburnick.
Morning. Okay, my name's Mitch Coburnick. I live at 5001 South Shore in Gulf Harbors. I also serve on the Board of the Gulf Harbor Civic Association, and one of my duties in that role is to maintain the standards and the appearance of the neighborhood. And that's why I'm here today. The vast majority of the homeowners are very conscientious. They take great pride in their, in their homes and the appearance of their homes. But there's one particular property owner that I do need your help with, and you're in a unique position to help me, because that property owner is the county. Before the county purchased the Gulf Harbors golf course, we were able to enforce the county ordinances for uncut grass against the previous owner. If they wouldn't cut the grass, we could, we could besiege the county to do it, and they would. They would cut the grass. They would charge the owner back. But now that the county owns the property, we no longer have that remedy to enforce the ordinance because the county is exempt from the, from the grass-cutting ordinances. So we basically just have to rely on the county to do what's right. Right now, the grass in the parking lot is over two feet high. It's been that way for a long time. I've been told that there's no plan to maintain that land until funds from the MSBU that was passed this year are available. Problem is, those taxes are only going to first appear on the 2023 tax bill for Gulf Harbors, and that's not going to be collected until probably early 2024. 2024. I can't even imagine allowing the property to continue to deteriorate until it starts being maintained in 2024. The county now owns the property. It will always own the property. And even after the MSBU kicks in and Gulf Harbors residents start to pay for the, for the maintenance of the exterior half of that, of that golf course land, the county's still going to own it. It's always going to be the owner of the property. The county owns other lands and other parks. The county maintains those parks at county expense. It has a budget for it. The voters just approved recently a bond issued to Parks and Recs for specifically park maintenance. So why is the county allowing the Gulf Harbors land to be neglected and not maintained, at least in the same manner that it maintains all its other lands and parks, MSBU or no MSBU? Thank you.
Thanks. And I've texted Keith, and I'll get with him to see what the plan is because, is he here? Yeah, because, you know, we have a little pickle because the MSBU, we, there was an error in the notification, so we missed a year to get that started. So we have a year of no funding because the Gulf Harbors community is responsible to pay for the mowing of the Gulf Harbors Park. But we'll, I'll look into that for you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The next three are Pastor Troy Peterson, Leonard Lord, and Navi Merrick. So, Pastor Troy?
Motion to. Aye. Good morning, Commissioners, Staff, Pastor Troy Peterson, 8114 Leo Kidd Road, Port Ritchie, Florida. What the Secretary is handing out is once again our yearly Care Fest with Somebody Cares, Pasco Hernando, working with Somebody Cares Tampa Bay, and Somebody Cares International, where we work with government leaders. Like in the past, we've had Congressman Gus Bilirakis help us with projects. Last year, I want to thank Commissioner Christina Fitzpatrick for coming, and Marcy from Community Development. They took, their team took on a couple of projects. And really, we believe that that's God's heart. That's why we're here in this community, is to serve, to work with our governing authorities, to obey our governing authorities. And this morning, I was praying and was in a prayer meeting, as you guys may know, every Tuesday morning for I don't know how many years. Pastor Lord could probably speak on that. I've been here six years. There's a group of pastors that get together at the Oasis Coffee Spot Tuesday mornings, and we pray for each and every one of our governing authorities. The primary mission is praying for Pasco County, seeking God. Pastor Lord, who's here this morning, he drew a diagram on the whiteboard one time, and it just really impacted me. He drew a pyramid, and he said, "Down here are God's people, reaching up to heaven to ask God on how we're to come together with our governing authorities to serve our community." So what we're doing is we're seeking God, to hear from God, and then to tell you all what God is saying. Now, I've been coming for over a year, and God gave me an assignment. That assignment, I know is going to have victory because He wouldn't send me someplace and there not be victory. Assignment was to come in here because you Commissioners and staff and pastors, we believe that Pasco County can be a premier county. It's a great county. It's a great county to live. Many believe that Pasco County is a hub for revival. And so the reason why God has sent me here is that if we would acknowledge Jesus Christ, the only way to the Father is through the Son. If we would acknowledge Jesus Christ in our Commissioner meetings, you can guarantee that God is going to bless Pasco County. Thank you for your time.
Leonard Lord?
Leonard Lord, I live at 9525 Sunbeam Drive for 45 years. Been here for 73 years. It's an honor to really come to a place where we can share our hearts for three minutes. You know, we, we all smile and go about our business like everything's okay, but it's not. We know these last few years that we have really fallen now into immorality and now bad inflation. And I was really thinking of what Deuteronomy said this morning, Deuteronomy 11, talking about the Ten Commandments. As you know, if we would teach our children these when we rose up in the morning, when we walked along in the day, and when we lay down at night, our days would be as heaven upon earth. And we're in perilous times. The Scripture makes it clear that everything that can be shaken will be shaken. But we're receiving a kingdom that can't be moved. What is it? The kingdom of God is when you live in the power, the Holy Spirit, that only Jesus gives, that you're able to make the right decisions with wisdom from God. You're able to do it in peace and joy. It says that kind of living is accepted of God and approved of men. So there is beginning to be a clash in our land between the governor of God that wants to stand for His word and the Judeo-Christian values, and those that are wanting to move us in the progressive. We saw what happened in the schools. We've been fighting for years. So myself, as a citizen, I want to give all I can to restore the family, husbands loving their wives, wives loving their husbands, children seeing what a family's really about. And so I want to thank you for what you do. I can't imagine, that's why we pray for you. There's a lot on your shoulder. But it's when God's government and the government God called to rule come together, He commands a blessing. Says everything's going to be shaken, but we're receiving God's presence that can't be shaken, the foundation, or the foundation any man laid in Jesus Christ. It says, "The gold is His, the silver is His," and He said, "He'll build then." So I do what I do simply because God makes a way. Thank you all, and God bless you. It's a joy to live in Pasco. We enjoy serving you. May the Lord richly bless you and fill you with His wisdom. In Jesus's name.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Navi Merrick?
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. My name is Navi Merrick, 10327 McCannapi Street, Newport Ritchie, Florida. And I'm with the Florida Premier Youth Soccer Association, formerly known as West Pasco Youth Soccer Association. I'm here to support the increase of the impact fees so we can keep supporting our youth and keep supporting and improving and building new parks for our youth to play on. So, I started with Florida Premier, then known as West Pasco Youth Soccer Association, 22 years ago. I've been in charge of Florida Premier the last 15 years, and we have started with a very small neighborhood club out of Mitchell Fields. And right now, we've built one of the biggest and most successful youth soccer association in the country. We have over 5,000 kids playing soccer in Pasco and are playing at the highest level in the highest leagues in the country. This past weekend, we hosted 500 families from across from Alabama and Atlanta. They were in our county, staying in our hotels, going to our restaurants, and we didn't have fields to host them at. So, my goal is with the Parks and Recs helps and you guys' help, whatever we can do for our youth, right? Our youth is the future of our county. So whatever we need to do, we need to invest in our youth. And that starts with Parks and Rec, our youth, every, right? Any sport. I'm not just talking about soccer. I'm talking about football, baseball, lacrosse, anything. They should have fields to play on. There should not be arguments between organizations, who has fields, who doesn't have fields. We want the kids off the streets, on the sports facilities, playing sports. So whatever you guys can do to help us out, it will be greatly appreciated. I know our families, our staff, Parks and Rec, Keith, Brian, we've worked very, very hard to get sports in Pasco County to be the highest it can be. I think this is a great opportunity to take us to the next level. I've lived here in Pasco County for 22 years. I have my own children. I'm hoping for my children, right, to want to stay in Pasco, raise their own families. And if we can start with improving the county parks, I think it's going to go a long way. So, thank you very much, and thank you.
Thanks for coming, Navi.
So, Madam Chair, that's all I have who's signed up. I don't know if there's anyone else. And to let you know about WebEx, we had two individuals sign up previously, but they're not on in the queue.
Okay. Is there anyone else here who wishes to address? Come on up. Name and address. Anyone else besides this gentleman? Okay. Why don't you line up behind him?
My name's Wayland Rains. I live at 3229 Covina Street, Newport Ritchie. The thing I'd like to discuss is what appears to be selective enforcement of code enforcement. Couple of years back, I started getting inundated with visits from code enforcement for various different things, of a shed being too large or whatnot. I was told it was called in by anonymous people and that they couldn't reveal who the callers were. I addressed with the gentleman at the time the vast number of places within Pasco County that are horrendous and need some serious attention. He told me that there's no way that they could proactively go out and initiate contact with any of these people without a caller. Now, here recently, this last week, code enforcement came into our neighborhood, and we've got several people who own businesses that have their plumbing vehicles or whatnot parked in their, in their yards or in their driveways. They all got cited this week for illegally having commercial vehicles parked in a residential neighborhood. There are several other violations, like boats and driveways sticking out past the house. I mean, there are numerous violations technically within the neighborhood. None of them got written. The only people who have been addressed and written citations are the commercial vehicles, the business owners in Pasco County. So it's, it looks a little odd that a Commissioner's name is put on as the complainant, and we were told now that they can proactively engage people, but they put a Commissioner's name on as the complainant and that they've changed the law. So I don't know if that's true, that the laws.
Just recently?
Yes, this past week. Your name is the one that's being put on all the citations.
Oh, that's, thank you, code enforcement.
Yes. But my one question is, has the, the ruling changed to where they can proactively make contact and issue citations?
No, wait, wait, wait. When you're done making your comment, I will have someone go out and talk with you about what the laws, the laws did change, and we don't do conversation here.
Okay.
So I'll have someone inform you, and then I'll look into why they're putting my name on all the, on the sweeps, I guess.
And that's the concern that I have. It, it looks really bad upon the county commission and on the county in general if, well, I'm just saying, if a representative of this county is going out and using names of you as meaning the reasons why they're going for it and targeting specifically business owners versus all the properties that desperately need attention from code enforcement, it just looks really bad. It sets a bad precedent.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm gonna, let me, I'm gonna assist for a second here, if you don't mind.
I'm thinking about it.
And then, and then again, code enforcement will explain to you the laws and the recent ordinance changes and things like that. But if citizens call into a county commission office with a code complaint, the county commission's office is obligated to forward that to code enforcement. So if it goes through a county commission office, that's probably why somebody, you may have seen somebody's name on where it came from. So that happens from time to time. It happens, I would assume, to everybody. They come through my office. We get phone calls, say, hey, this, I'm not, you're not in my area, so I wouldn't know what you've got going on. But, you know, so-and-so, this is a code complaint. We want to call it in. It has, we have to turn it in. That's why a Commissioner's name is probably on there. That's my assumption.
I understand that concept.
So, we, we no longer allowed to
Yeah. They might have been old.
Put calls under our names for anonymous. Yeah.
Yeah, they might have been old.
So, I don't, I'm allowed to count it, okay, since we're getting into this.
If it does come through you guys, it's in the past, from personal experience, the citations have come from anonymous people that comes through you, and then to code enforcement, it comes in showing anonymous as the caller.
Madam Chairman, so, let's, so cutting to the chase, the legislature changed the law with regard to all local governments within the state that not, that we could not take anonymous complaints anymore. There has, there has never been a law that says that code enforcement couldn't proactively do sweeps within neighborhoods. What you were probably told was code enforcement doesn't have the resources to do, to proactively do enforcement all over the county. And so they were, up until recently, they were operating on a complaint-based system of enforcement. But they can do sweeps, they can, they can, if there are a lot of, if there are a lot of violations within a neighborhood, there is nothing in the law that says that they can't go through a neighborhood and determine violations that they can observe.
And, and I appreciate that. And I retired from law enforcement, so I understand the way the system goes. And I promise I didn't mishear or misunderstand what the gentleman said the three times that he came out to me saying he was not allowed, because I asked him, why don't you go address this, this, and this?
Yeah, well, I'm gonna look into that.
That he was not allowed to.
Yeah.
Not that he didn't have the resources to, that he was not allowed to.
Is there anyone from code here? Okay, Sally will meet you up back.
That's not only, I'll get on here.
No, I understand. I understand 100%.
That's not a big concern. It's just the selective enforcement, not necessarily the proactive or non-proactive, just the selective. If you're going to come to a neighborhood and only target the people who have businesses, it looks really bad.
And Madam Chair, I believe it was about a year ago that we did create and initiate the proactive code enforcement team, the PACE team.
Well, we've been doing that for a while, but I didn't know they were putting the Commissioners' names on it when they go do a sweep in a neighborhood. So that's, that's a new one for me. Plus, I don't understand selective, but, you know, I'm, I'm going to look into it.
But if there's multiple reports in a specific area, they will do
Do you have a public comment?
A PACE, they'll do a sweep, but also when they go out, they go and they'll stand, and if there is a complaint, they'll address that house, but they also do a 360 surveillance.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Next. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, yeah, Justin Durham, 3223 Covina Street, Newport Ritchie. I'm pretty much here, you know, just trying to figure out why, like, like he said, it's a, it's a pinpoint on, you know, commercial vehicles. We're not in a deed restricted, we're not in an HOA, and that's for a reason. It's hard enough times right now with inflation and everything else going on. So now, for my work vehicle, I've got to go find somewhere and store it. You know what I mean? It's, it's only two vehicles, that's it. And I keep my area clean. There's, like the gentleman before me said, there's a lot of other violations going on, but nothing's being said about that. I keep my area clean, everything, there's no impeding sidewalks, no anything. So why is it that, you know, a ladder on top of a truck is a terrible thing? And that's what I got out of my violations. And I'm getting $500 apiece for each vehicle if it's in my driveway. I think that's a little ridiculous. And there's a lot of hardworking people then, in the neighborhood, that are getting hit with these. And it's not fair.
Thank you very much. And you might want to join, there's Sally in the back. Okay, is there anyone else here who wants to speak? Okay, then we will close public comment and we will take up the resolutions.
So Madam Clerk, did you say that the ones on WebEx had not, had dropped off?
Well, neither one of the two that had previously lined up were logged in.
Okay.
Okay, resolution one is a time certain, so we will move on to resolution two.
Time certain.
Is that also time certain?
That is time certain at 11:15.
Okay.
We have resolution three.
All right. And I don't, okay, resolution three.
Is anyone here for Mental Health Awareness Week? Please step up to the podium. All right, I'll proceed to read the resolution. It's resolution number 22-221. A resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, declaring the week of October 2nd through October 8th, 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Week and recognizing October 8th, 2022 as Recreate, Recreate Your Mind Stomp Out Suicide Day in Pasco County. Whereas mental health conditions affect everyone in our community, either directly or indirectly through family, friends, or coworkers. Therefore, the week of October 2nd through 8th, 2022 is designated as Mental Health Awareness Week to raise awareness of mental health conditions, fighting discrimination against those affected with mental health disorders and provide support. And whereas the Pasco County Parks Recreation and Natural Resources Department recognizes mental health as an integral part of overall health and well-being and acknowledges that mental health disorders affect countless people in our community. And whereas Pasco County Parks Recreation and Natural Resources is committed to raising public awareness about mental health conditions and how they affect the people in our community. And whereas approximately half of us will have a mental health diagnosis at some point in our lives. And whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States and the second leading cause of death among young adults, 90% of people who die by suicide have a, an underlying mental health condition. And whereas stigma and fear of discrimination may keep those who fight, who might benefit from the health, who might benefit from mental health services from seeking the help they need. And whereas through education about mental health, about local mental health resources, we can encourage our citizens to seek help in maintaining their mental health. And whereas mental health services support not only the individuals who live with a mental illness, but are also a beneficial, are also beneficial to our families, friends, and our community at large by decreasing homelessness, hospitalizations, and criminalization of those with mental health disorders, all of which impose a significant emotional and financial cost to our community. And whereas the National Recreation and Park Association concludes that the more time spent in parks and green spaces increases an individual's ability to fight against mental health issues and that ensuring all people have access to parks is vital in heightening these positive effects. And whereas Stomp Out Suicide Day and the Stomp Out Suicide, and Stomp Out Suicide Trail Runs in Pasco County can serve as a way to uplift and assist those, assist those in our community who suffer from mental health disorders and celebrate the lives of those who we have lost through complications of mental health disorders. And whereas mental health education can help to de-stigmatize mental health conditions and improve the lives of individuals and families affected by it, can provide steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health and can provide appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions before they reach a critical stage. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby declares the week of October 2nd through 8th, 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Week and recognizes October 8th, 2022 as Recreate Your Mind Stomp Out Suicide Day in Pasco County. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 20th day of September, 2022.
Christina, you want to make the motion?
I move.
Motion to approve, but I would also like to say something after.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's your, it's your resolution?
I would like to say thank you for helping raise awareness and everything that you do. I did attend the Stomp Out Suicide Walk last year. I'm planning to attend again this year as well. It's very important that people are encouraged to step up and ask for help. And I under, I know that a lot of people refuse to do that. So let's keep encouraging them and thank you again.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning. Keith Wiley, Parks Recreation Natural Resources Director. I'm going to step aside because I think it's very, I'm very proud of this team behind me. They're the, they're the brain trust that put together this program. So I'm going to let them speak and say a couple of words.
Great.
I'd like to introduce Ms. Kim Miller.
To everyone in their respective places, we are Parks and Recreation. We came up with the Recreate Your Mind Mental Health Awareness Campaign 2021. We lost a member of our team to suicide. We had a patron go to one of our passive parks, suicide. We also lost a local sheriff's deputy, East Pasco, suicide. So instead of sitting by the wayside and doing nothing, we're fortunate to work with like-minded people and have amazing community partners that have partnered for the 2022 campaign, which include, there's a lot, so prepare yourself. We're going to be at the Out of the Darkness Suicide Walk at Sims Park, Newport Ritchie, October 1st. Paddle for Purpose out at Sunwest Park, October 1st as well. Sunset paddle, it's going to be really nice. A mental health luncheon at Wesley Chapel Rec Center. It's going to feature a keynote speaker. That's October 6th. We also have Bubba's 33, Wesley Chapel is going to give their proceeds back to us so that we can do, huh, my neurons are on fire. But we're going to be able to do just programs year round. We have our big event, the Stomp Out Suicide, 10K, 5K, and one-mile trail run, October 8th. That's at Wood Lakouchi River Park in beautiful Dade City. And then we're going to end our week with Kitten Yoga and Painting for a Purpose all at Wesley Chapel District Park. All of this is on our Facebook page or I am the original Kim Miller in Pasco County, so you can email me. But again, we say thank you, standing shoulder to shoulder with us, my, my peers, but just letting the community know, we can wreck through what we go through.
Are you going to give us those flyers?
Yes, ma'am.
We don't have to do a motion on those.
Motion to receive and file.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate you guys supporting this resolution.
Well, thank you so much. Do you, how do you want to do the photo?
You probably should stand, I've heard there was quite a few of them.
Good job, Kim.
I'm just trying to figure out putting the chair up.
All right, everybody right here. One, two, three. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
I love when you say one, two, three, but the whole time through one, two, three, I hear click. That's a special move that you do, right? I should have let it out.
It's candid up till three.
It's all candid until then, right? With our mouths going.
Okay, since the, do I have this right? The other two are time certens?
Yep, 11:00 and 11:15.
Okay, so we will move on to the consent agenda?
Yes.
My tabs don't have those listed. All right, so I have C13 pulled by Jeff Stein Snyder, appointment, Pasco Hernando Workforce Board. C24, Andrew Baxter, pull and revise, Fleishman Garcia Architects. Commissioner Mariano, C59, shortlist and negotiated agreement for Grand Boulevard Bridge. Branford, Aduma, C36, recording of a plat for Winfield's, withdrawn. And Branford, C71, railroad crossing maintenance reimbursement, withdrawn. Timothy Trescher, Tresler, C73, award of bid to Greer Enterprises, withdrawn. Timothy Tresler, C74, award of bid, also to Greer Enterprises, withdrawn. David Allen, C78, confirmation of directors for utilities, pull and discuss. And Keith Wiley, C102, award of bid for Lisa Lake Park Playground, pull and revise.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just want to clarify before the motion. You had said C36, you meant C63 for the number four. You read, you read the description, but I just wanted to make sure that was clear for the record. It was C63.
Okay, I don't, is that number six? Because I have written here C70.
Number four.
Number four.
Oh, yeah.
C63 of the plat needed to come on.
Okay. Okay, Board members, anything else wish to be pulled from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. All right, so C24. It says withdrawn. Sorry.
Good morning, Board. Andrew Baxter, Facilities Management Director. This is to replace a requisition page in the packet with the appropriate requisition. We had several fire station items this, this week. We slipped in the wrong one into the wrong packet, so this just corrects that.
Superbowl, look what's on.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Mr. Mariano, C59.
Yes, Madam Chair. Very happy to see this coming forward. The thing that we did to additional, to, to help with the bridges, we're going to raise the level, what is designed, to the minimum clearance elevation of this bridge at Grand Boulevard to meet the clearance elevation of the Main Street Bridge. So I'm fully supportive of it. I will talk about a bridge in my district later on, but I move approval.
That's great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Then we have C78.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Allen, Utilities Director. I'm pleased to introduce Mr. Adolfo Gonzalez. He is being recommended for the next Utilities Director over the Engineering Group. Mr. Adolfo has over 30 years of experience in civil engineering, has a Bachelor of Science degree from Georgia Institute of Technology. And he is a registered professional engineer in Florida, has lots of experience in, in transportation projects, water sewer projects, as well as drainage projects. And I'm pleased to present him this morning and would seek your approval of his confirmation of appointment as Utilities Director. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to address the board? Or we could vote on him first, then address the board?
Well, let's hear what he has to say. We might change our minds.
You're on the spot.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and good morning, Commissioners. I'm happy to be here, ready to serve the residents and businesses of Pasco County with your guidance and with the leadership of the county administrators team. If you have to answer any questions you may have for me.
Superbowl.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you. Welcome.
You've joined us and welcome. All right, Keith, C102.
Good morning again. We accidentally left off the, we had to update the fiscal statement. We accidentally left off the reference to the GoBond.org, so we needed to get that corrected. If not, there wouldn't be enough money to get the project.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, that is the end of the consent agenda. And we will now go to the regular agenda. And we are on 104. Presentation only.
Good morning, Commissioner. Peter Schu, Florida DOT, District Safety Administrator, with my partner Eric Henry. We're going to present to you about Pasco US-19 Challenge and the opportunity. And I just, Florida DOTs will be here to answer your question. Also, we ask for your support too, for our coming safety action. Eric?
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time today. My name is Eric Henry. I work at the District 7 Safety Office. Peter has asked me to present the content of the presentation today on his behalf. Afterwards, he'll make himself available to answer any questions you all might have. So we are talking today about US-19 here in Pasco County and the traffic safety issues that we face on that corridor, as well as some of the opportunities for improvements as well.
So we, so our screens are not working, so we won't be able to see the presentation unless you turn the TVs this way. And I think the Commissioners want to see the presentation. Thank you. Thank you.
There we go. In 2019, FDOT created the Pasco Countywide Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Action Plan. Purpose of this plan was to identify crash trends in Pasco County and compare them with nationwide averages. Doing so, we found that the fatality rate for pedestrians in Pasco was 150% above the national average. That's 220% above the national average for bicyclists.
Wow.
So clearly there was an issue there. We needed to look a little bit deeper, figure out exactly what was going on. Looking at crash data, we saw US-19 as a clear area of concern. Looking at only bicycle and pedestrian crashes, we see that more than 25% occur on US-19 in Pasco County. That is more than double any other corridor. We know from census data that high crash corridors like US-19 are more likely to have a high concentration of households with persons with disabilities, as well as households in poverty. Furthermore, we know that those households are much more likely to depend on walking, biking, and public transit to make most of their day-to-day travel. So we likely have a higher-than-average number of people walking and biking. That combined with any safety issues we may see could be what's contributing to that high fatality rate that we saw previously. We've become aware of the issue for a while now, but recently the media has become aware as well.
Can, excuse me, I just got texted by someone that they can't hear you speak. Could you maybe try lifting that mic up, but they're having trouble online.
Hopefully, that's better.
Let's try, let's try that. It went back down, lift it up just a little bit. Okay.
Maybe.
Thank you.
There we go. I'll stand a little closer as well. So a recent Vox article to headline, "How a Stretch of US-19 in Florida Became the Deadliest Road for Pedestrians." This article highlighted a couple of useful pieces of information to categorize just how big of a problem we're facing on US-19. It catalogued pedestrian crash hotspots nationwide and found that seven out of the 60 total were on US-19 in Pasco County.
Wow.
Not only did they find that it was the deadliest road in Pasco County for pedestrians, but the deadliest in Florida overall. Looking at our own crash data, we saw that 21% of all fatalities in Pasco were occurring on US-19. Put that in terms of all our vulnerable road users, our pedestrians, bicyclists, motorcyclists, we found that 30% of all fatalities to these vulnerable road users were occurring on this one roadway, US-19 in Pasco County. To put that in terms-
When did your date, when did the date of this occur? Because we had two deaths a couple of weeks ago.
Yes, one's a Saturday, one's September 11.
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe the data range for this was 2015 to 2021, I believe.
So.
But to put that in terms of incapacitating injuries, that's 16% of all incapacitating injuries or 17% of vulnerable road user incapacitating injuries on one roadway. So we've clearly identified an issue that needs steps to address it. So what have we been doing to address it? We, one way is through leading pedestrian intervals, or LPIs. If you're not familiar, it is essentially allowing an extra three to 10 seconds in the pedestrian walk phase before vehicles are given the green signal. The idea for this is to get pedestrians out into the middle of the crosswalk where they will be visible to right-turning vehicles once they receive the green signal, hopefully thereby preventing a crash. District 7 has been a champion in the, in the implementation of LPIs. We have around two-thirds of all the LPIs in the entire state of Florida, 30 locations on US-19 in Pasco County. We are currently in the data collection phase of before-and-after evaluation of this treatment in order to determine exactly how well it's performing in reducing pedestrian and bicycle crashes and intersections. We are also continuing our district-wide lighting retrofit to upgrade- We are also continuing our district-wide lighting retrofit, upgrade outdated lighting equipment to LED lighting. We have funded two point six million dollars worth of improvements, including along US nineteen, covering fourteen point nine miles of roadway from the Pinellas County Line to New York Avenue at twenty-four signalized intersections. Additionally, we have an ongoing district-wide lighting level measurement to go ahead and obtain lighting level measurements on all state roads to take a proactive approach to determining what the lighting conditions are on our roads, and to take a proactive approach to before-and-after evaluation as well. At signalized intersections, we have funded or implemented two point seven million dollars to provide missing crosswalks at twenty-two signalized intersections in US nineteen, with four hundred thousand dollars planned for three remaining sites. You can see on the right here, a before, a wide stretch of roadway that was missing the crosswalk, and afterwards, where we've gone ahead and added the high emphasis crosswalk in there. Additionally, we have two million dollars spent for two new signals and sidewalk gap improvements to provide better connectivity for pedestrians that utilize this area. Another issue that the Vox article that I mentioned highlights was crossing distance. To quote the article, "The crosswalks are so few and far between that a simple act, crossing the street to get to a business a few hundred feet away, might mean walking over half a mile to reach the nearest crosswalk." That's certainly something that we don't want to see, so we have identified seven locations and proposed new mid-block crosswalks, or mid-block pedestrian signals at those locations. These locations were determined based on a study of bicycle and pedestrian crash history, as well as their proximity to significant pedestrian generators, tractors, transit stops, distance to the nearest signal or crossing, as well as pedestrian and bicycle crossing counts. You can see on the right there, the seven locations that we have highlighted and proposed crossings at. Among those, we have identified one location as a preliminary priority to put a crosswalk in, that is at Buena Vista Lane, Bartelt Road. We identified this based on the crash history at this location. We have seen ten bicycle pedestrian crashes between 2015 to 2021, nine of which resulted in a serious injury, and one of which resulted in a fatality. Unfortunately, so far this year, we have already seen one additional fatality at this location as well. So pending the results of a final benefit cost analysis of all seven proposed locations, the plan is to go ahead and implement this mid-block pedestrian signal in this case through design-build-pushPut-in-five in 2023. Since this is a mid-block pedestrian signal, we have a short little thing here displaying how that would work. It's like a typical traffic signal, and vehicles will stop at the red light, and pedestrians will receive the okay to walk. At the end of the pedestrian walk phase, the pedestrian receives a flashing red, don't walk, followed by a flashing red for the vehicle, and finally, a green light with a solid red, don't walk, for the pedestrian. In addition to these engineering countermeasures, we have also been doing a lot of outreach on this corridor. Our geofencing campaign is able to target the mobile devices of motorists who are actively using the road and reach them with a safety message, and provide them with an opportunity to take a survey, to provide feedback. We have also been doing on-the-street outreach, both night and day, providing bicycle lights and reflective items to vulnerable road users who are presently and actively using the roadway. And doing this, we've been able to get a lot of very valuable feedback to understand their purpose for traveling on US nineteen that day, and to get their opinion on what they think should be done to improve the corridor. We have also visited over two hundred businesses in person to conduct interviews with the owners and get their feedback, and to provide them with countercards with a QR code that links to that survey I mentioned, in order to get their customers' feedback as well. We have also mailed this postcard over six thousand households, in order to continue to engage the community that these changes would affect, to get their feedback on what they would like to see. We've also installed signal cabinet art at twenty-two locations, including along US nineteen. These signal cabinet wraps display a diverse range of road users, all safely using crossing facilities. You can see a few of the locations where we've put them on US nineteen here. Total of four places. Five places, excuse me. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Peter Schu, our District Seven Safety Administrator, to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. To allow us to present the challenge and opportunity with you. You saw the challenge from this Pasco US nineteen, your Pasco US nineteen, my Pasco US nineteen. Really, when we saw the Vox news, just published two months ago, July, we said, wow, we, Florida DOT have taken with your great staff here. I appreciate your public work. Your MPO have been working with us for a lot of public outreach's effort, and later, we still have the issue. So want to think back to the previous slide, the signal, mid-block pedestrian signal we are going to install, we need the support from all county commissioners, because one of the new restrictions from Secretary Gwen, he say, he want the endorsement from elected official, and still the staff, because we have a good lesson learned earlier this year. We got the endorsement for all the worker bee. They said they love it, but when they go to elected official, they said, no, they don't want it. And later, for that particular project, safety project, we lost quarter million dollars for doing nothing. We said, well, we don't want that thing happen again. That's limited your tax money from Uncle Sam, from your DOT. So we want to use the money in the wise way to really make Pasco, US nineteen and Pasco safer. Any question?
So I'm very familiar with mid-block crossings, and I think they work really well, and I'm a hundred percent in favor of your efforts there. And that's my district that keeps having all these fatalities. Sadly, I think some of them are because we have some drug houses in that area, and people are impaired. And right in that area by Buena Vista Lane, maybe a block north is one of our major ones. And sadly, it's, I was there the other day, and I watched a drug deal go down when we were doing the cleanup, so. But Commissioner Oakley would like to speak.
Yes.
Thank you.
I've been there six years, and for the entire six years I've been here, Secretary Gwen and his staff, you folks also, I mean, part of that staff, you've done everything in the world to do safety first, and I've noticed that and recognized that. I reached out to him on, there in the Lakucha area where we had ninety-eight, had a bad accident when a teenager got killed at that, and that wasn't the first crash. There's been several there. And he immediately, within less than probably eight months, he had a new roundabout right there at ninety-eight and Trebly Road. Very well done.
From the side, from your DOT money, Federal Safety Fund.
Yep.
Thank you.
And I realize that, and I appreciate it. You also took out a bright bike lane right there north of Dade City at Lock Street and three oh one, because of safety reasons. So everything I've seen that DOT is basically, they're safety first. And if you go by that, these corrections on nineteen to make our citizens safer on these roads, so I certainly appreciate it, appreciate Secretary Gwen with all the work he and his staff and team actually do in our district. So we've always, as a commissioner, I think, since I've been here, we're very well with DOT and his district, so it's really been good for us. They've had at least probably four hundred to six hundred million dollars ongoing construction on roads in Pasco County ever since I've been elected, so it's been good.
Commissioner Moore.
Thank you. Listen, I just want to say thank you guys for all your work, and we have a great working relationship, obviously, with DOT, FDOT, FDOT. So thank you both for everything, and, you know, we're very thankful, again, for Secretary Gwen. I mean, I don't want to knock the rest of the Secretaries throughout the state, but I think he's kind of the best of the best.
I agree.
He's very, very, works very, very closely with us, and he's obviously always, you know, he's always well-received with this, in this county and this board. So again, we appreciate you guys and your continued efforts, so thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mariano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'll echo the same sentiments. Since Secretary Gwen has come and play, we've had a great relationship working, whatever the issue is, no matter what part of the county, what the transportation is. So thank you guys for all you do. Let me ask a question. Of the accidents that are there, sometimes you get a car accident, there's going to be a drug test. Do you guys drug test to find out if someone's impaired?
Yeah, we do.
What's the percentage of those that get hit that are drug-induced in one way or another?
That's something that we are working with Florida Highway Patrol closely. Some of the one, in the recent fatal crashes, they're not willing to release the data because statute requirement. But in the past, we did look at very, very high percentages related to impale walker or driver.
I think it's a very important statistic that we need to know.
Yeah.
I wish you guys would dig into it, push harder, you have to, if you need help from us or our state legislators, that information is critical. Commissioner Stark, as you know, if they're doing drugs, they're walking outside, and one was a battle with someone on drugs that, you know, helped an accident happen. So that is something that's important. It's important to know that the improvement you're making for these mid-crosswalks, et cetera, is great, but if you have someone that's got a bigger issue, then if we knew that, that would be helpful for us as far as what is the best way to prevent these. And up and down nineteen, with all the open cars, there is a lot of homeless going up and down that are going in there, finding a way to make money, find a way to make drugs to live their lifestyle. So that may be your biggest thing, not all these engineering improvements you're doing.
Yeah.
So if you could, dig into that. As far as safety goes, I know the channelization, I think, has worked very well out there that you guys had put in several years ago. We don't see as many accidents, I don't believe, out there as we did. And your cooperation, I'll tell you, at Beacon Woods Drive in Leisure Lane was phenomenal. Working that partnership with you was tremendous. One thing I noticed in a recent trip with NACA was overpasses that they have out in the Denver area. Very, very active community, people are out in the streets all the time. Their overpasses are probably about one-tenth the structure that we use. Now, I don't know if we are building these major, major structures that maybe we should really relook at that. Did you say you had forty million dollars that didn't get spent because you didn't have projects?
Now, on the federal safety side, in the PowerPoint or in the front, we say we already, in the past four years, we already spent eight million dollar Federal Safety Fund to Pasco US nineteen. From District Seven, we receive fifteen million dollars a year. So really, we allocate fifteen percent of the Uncle Sam Federal Safety Fund on Pasco US nineteen every year in the past four years. I just sent a marching order to my team. For example, this signal, the lighting, and other missing crosswalk, we're going to start the design process in end of this year. That's another two million dollars. So I, from my side, I commit fifteen, fifteen percent of the Federal Safety Fund allocate to Tampa Bay, just for Pasco US nineteen only.
And I think it's the deadliest road, we're going to get some attention, so we might as well capitalize on it.
Yeah.
So what I'd like to look at, and I'd be happy to talk with you a little bit later on, is there's these firms that are out there that can build them a lot smaller.
Yeah.
Than these major structures, so instead of being four, five, or ten million dollars, we could get them done a lot less. Maybe you're not going to accommodate some other things like golf carts or whatever, which you probably wouldn't allow anyway, but at least if people on bikes or can get over and across these things, and set up several of them up and down, like a lot of other areas do. In Miami, every street block pretty much had a crossway.
Yep.
Going from building to building, connecting.
Yes.
So I think on nineteen, we should start looking at that, and I don't think you're going to get it done by using these massive structures that you've built in the past. I think we've got to go smaller, more direct.
Yep.
Still got to build them safe.
But to be fair, we will look into this pedestrian overpass option.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
While pulling the data for the top ten intersections for crashes and fatalities for the pedestrians, six out of ten intersections in Pasco County are on US Highway nineteen. So I would like to say thank you for addressing that, because it's really important that we reduce those numbers. In addition, I also have the numbers for the top ten motorized intersection crashes, and four of them overlap, of course, with the pedestrian walkers, and two of them are also on nineteen. So I would like to continue to follow that data, just for the pedestrians, but also for the motorized intersection crashes, because two do overlap at those intersections.
We are looking to use the money wisely to do the best thing we can do, but I really appreciate the support from all the commissioners. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I think we have an eleven o'clock time cert, so I'm going to try and keep this moving. Commissioner Mariano wants to make a quick statement, but do you need a motion from us to support mid-block crossings?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Mariano.
Just one last thing, as far as, we've been working on the underpass project at Cody River. I think that would be a great thing as far as getting people crossing back and forth. I really wish you guys would focus with us on that, to get that done, because it's two cities involved, and the county. When you talk about trying to save lives, you get a lot of golf carts that do cross. That may not be part of your mental mix, but transportation back and forth under that roadway will probably make it a lot safer as well.
Agreed. Good point. All right, I'll entertain a motion to support mid-block crossings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you so much. Will you be coming to the MPO?
The meeting? I can, if you request. Easy.
Well, I kind of think that they should report, because the city of Newport Ritchie and Port Ritchie are there, Zephyr Hills.
Yeah, yeah, we avoid the MPO meeting on purposely.
Oh.
Because the bad experience we learned is the Green Key at US nineteen. We already started construction, and city council say, no, they don't want it.
What?
And later, later.
Wait, who owns Green Key? Whose road is Green Key Road?
Newport Ritchie.
I think it's ours.
It's, as, whatever, it will be maintained by Pasco County authorities within Newport Ritchie. So they sent a letter to Secretary Gwen, say they don't want it. And we already ordered all the mess, and Secretary Gwen say, we honor your request one time only. But in the future, we will not get, we will not take the endorsement from Public Work Director, whoever. We want to get endorsement.
Scheduled to be there.
Yeah, that's the thing, I tried to avoid Newport Ritchie, because they were fighting.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Well, I'm going to dig into that. Commissioner Moore, you're saying that they're scheduled?
You're already scheduled to come to the workshop in October.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Which is, our MPO board will be there.
Okay. All right, well, in the meantime, we'll dig into that as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
All right, we have an eleven o'clock time cert. Commissioner Moore.
Thank you, ma'am.
And the clerk will read the resolution.
Yeah, so if we could go ahead and, the Porter family, if you guys, if you guys could all come up, if you don't mind. Welcome to West Pasco County. And the clerk is going to go ahead and read the resolution now.
Okay. Resolution number twenty-two dash two-two-four. Resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, recognizing and thanking the Porter family for their contributions to Pasco County. Whereas the Porter family first came to Pasco County in nineteen thirty-seven and purchased the land that would eventually become Wiregrass Ranch in nineteen forty-two. And whereas in nineteen forty-six, James H. and Martha M. Porter moved to a home, moved to a home in Wiregrass Ranch where they would raise their sons, Don, Tom, and Bill. Together, they would raise cattle and farm citrus to grow their ranch. And whereas the Wiregrass Ranch name came in nineteen fifty from a postcard sent by Ed McMadill, a fan, a friend of the Porter family, who addressed it to Wiregrass Porter, Gatorville, Florida, USA, and it still arrived at the correct address.
That's great.
And whereas in the early nineteen seventies, the first substantial land sale was made to what would become Saddle Brook Golf and Tennis Center. Later developments involving the Porter family and Wiregrass Ranch land would include a major shopping center, hospital and medical facilities, schools, hotels, entertainment, venues, and sports facilities. Even with these major developments, much more is still planned for the future in Pasco County. And whereas in May of twenty thirteen, the Porter family donated land to Pasco County that would later become the Wiregrass Ranch Sports Campus of Pasco County. The campus is now the centerpiece of tourism efforts by the county's destination management organization, Experience Florida's Sports Coast. And whereas the Porter family also gives back to the community through the not-for-profit Wiregrass Ranch Foundation, which is dedicated to increasing opportunities in our community through philanthropic stewardship and innovation. And whereas, Wiregrass Ranch still has active agriculture and ranching operations with over five thousand one hundred forty-two acres of land, and represents over one billion dollars of tax base within the county, and is still growing strong. And whereas, Bill Porter, the president of Wiregrass Ranch, and the next generation of porters, includes J.D. Quinn, Colby, Haley, Hatcher, Alexis, Rachel, Linda, and Debbie, are continuing the family tradition of commitment to Pasco County started by James and Martha Porter. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby recognizes and thanks the Porter family for their contributions to the Pasco County community, done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 20th day of September, 2022.
Move for approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? No? Motion?
I thought they were in District, I thought they actually were in District 1, but it could be mixed up a little bit.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We made them come over to this side, I see.
Exactly. Well, my time is limited, and then the other ones were full. So, well, we wanted to, obviously, this board wanted, and the entire team here in Pasco County wanted to obviously recognize the contributions that the Florida, the Porter families not only had on Pasco County, but actually the region and the entire state. So some of the things I think about when I think about the Porter name and Wiregrass Ranch, these kind of, these come to mind. Philanthropists, innovators, giving, community, and last but not least, but trailblazers, because that's what you've been, your entire family's been, two Pasco County trailblazers. A lot of people forget that where Saddlebrook lies, that was your land. That was your first big sale, if I'm not correct, back in the day, right? I say back in the day. I was alive, but, but Saddlebrook was your first big sale, and we know what obviously that did for the community. But I moved back, I moved to Pasco County in 2007. And when I moved to Pasco County in the neighborhood I lived in, there was J.C. Penney, right? There was, there was the J.C. Penney. And I heard all these rumors about, oh, there's going to be this awesome, you know, outdoor mall. I go, please, please, because back then, even in 2007, my family and I, we were driving to Hillsborough County all the time to do our shopping except to go to Publix, because the Publix was across the street, or to go to J.C. Penney. But we were literally having to go into New Tampa. Not that I don't like our friends in Tampa, but I'd rather keep the money here in Pasco County. So that was just incredible when the mall got built, and I got to know the Porter family before, thankfully, before I became a county commissioner, and we became very close, and obviously been good friends with J.D. for a number of years, as well as Colby and Bill and Gwen, so it's great seeing you all here. But again, we wanted to recognize each and every one of you for all your contributions and your continued contributions, and I'll leave you with this. The most amazing things in sitting with Bill and Gwen and J.D. and Colby throughout the years, having these conversations, and Scott that's back there, is, and I think the public needs to know this, they could have sold this land off years and years and years ago. And I hate to use this word, they could have had more money than God because of this. But they've been very methodical in the way they've done things, because they want to do things right, and they want to continue to do things right. So not saying it's negative for people to want to, you know, obviously get, sell what they have, but they really have this sense of community, and that's why things are going the way they do there and will continue to. So with that, we thank you, and I think, J.D., you're going to be, speak on behalf of the family right now.
Absolutely. Well, appreciate all the kind words. Thank you very much. Appreciate all the commissioners. It has been a long path to get here, but we still have a long, long path to go. We've got a long runway that we're still working with, but on behalf of my entire family, thank you guys for making it an environment that we can succeed in and for continuing to grow. Pasco's changed a whole lot since we first sat up here and went through the DRI process and stuff like that. Thankfully, it's changed a whole lot. But working with you all and working with staff has become a lot easier, and we look forward to a lot more great years, and we've got plenty of good stuff to come. So thank all of you very much.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mariano?
Thank you. You know, J.D., sitting with your dad, your uncles, and going through that DRI process was something else. It was amazing to the board, you may not recall, but it was two 32 votes, and there was actually a motion and a second to actually turn it down, and I saw your dad at that time just like almost fall out of the chair. I go, we got to turn this thing around. We got the votes that go in the right way. But I'd say, your family's commitment from the get-go was always to do this first class. You took your time, you made sure you had it right, you waited for the right people to come in, and the way you've done it methodically, every step of the way has been fantastic, and Pasco is so much better off because of the Porter family. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Madam Chair. Yeah, Mr. Oakley.
I go back a little further than the rest of them, so I used to help you, well, with Don, Don, Tom, and Bill, and the whole group, and watched these, some of these grow up, even bought somebody's steer, I think, at Fair, because, and Don was upset because I wouldn't let him buy it, so, but I kept his uncle doing, but I did business with them, hauling, hauling, picking their fruit, and actually had a few vellages I used in the packing house when I was at I-75 and 54. But it seems like, well, Wiregrass was Wiregrass, but the mall itself, which is beautiful and been really, you know, one of the best malls that happened in our county, and really set up the growth of all of Wesley Chapel area, so. But y'all have done a great job in what you've been doing out there with your land, and you've been very good community service people at the same time. So we appreciate all that y'all have done. I mean, we really appreciate it, and we look forward to doing more business within the future, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, we think we want to come down and present you with the resolution, and we also have individual ones as well as a framework, so I think we could all.
All right, I won't, I won't say anything. It's okay, it's okay. We're glad that you're here.
Say something, please, please.
They know I love them.
Okay.
All right, so when we're done, I'm going to give you guys, I have multiple individuals that are waiting to have one.
Can you share some of those restaurants and landmarks?
Okay, the chair gets to get in here.
Yeah, well, let's slide the family, everybody from, just go to the ends, like Colby squeezing there, commissioners, that way the family can get the bill, and so I can squeeze this way a little bit so I can.
We can do the shoulder thing.
Move down just a little bit more, one more down so we can do the resolution there.
Any more?
There we go. Now we can. Okay. J.D., you got to put a hand on it.
Right here. One, two, three. Couple more.
And hold right there, I'm next.
Thank you.
All right, everybody hold.
J.D., put a hand on it.
Thank you.
I know I've directed you many times, but I, it's not. I think I have a list of some people.
Here's a framework, pretty guys. And then, Patrick, you can, I mean, grab these.
Appreciate it.
And.
Yeah. I just, I just.
J.D.
Okay.
Moving this.
Say, drive it back.
I'm going to walk out together real quick, then come back in.
You know, we have 11:15. Yes.
Okay, we have another resolution, and this one's mine. And clerk, can you please read the resolution? And those that were here to receive this one, can you come up to the podium?
It's the American Business Women's Day, which we love.
I did another measure.
All right, go ahead and read the resolution. Resolution number 22-222, all twos. A resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, declaring September 22nd, 2022, as American Business Women's Day in Pasco County. Whereas, American Business Women's Day was first celebrated in 1949 by the American Business Women's Association. In 1986, President Ronald Reagan issued a proclamation that nationally recognized September 22nd as American Business Women's Day. And whereas, American Business Women's Day serves as an opportunity to celebrate the ever-growing number of successful working women throughout our country and within our community. And whereas, American Business Women continues to make increasing contributions to our economy while they expand their horizons, diversify their skills, and set high personal and career goals. And whereas, today, more than 13 million firms are owned by women, employing nearly 9.4 million people and generating 1.9 trillion in sales as of 2019. Women own firms 51% or more, account for 39% of all privately-held firms, and contribute 8% of employment and 4.2% of revenues. And whereas there, whereas though these numbers are promising, women continue to face disadvantages in the workplace. American Business Women's Day is an opportunity to reflect on and address issues women may face in the workplace. And whereas, American Business Woman Day brings together businesswomen from countless occupations to help each other grow personally and professionally through leadership, education, and network. And whereas, today, a record number of women are business leaders and business owners. Women at all levels of business are critical to strengthening our local and national economy. While working, working women today are paving the way for future generations of working women and ensuring their path to success. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby declare September 22nd, 2022, as American Business Women's Day in Pasco County, and celebrates the triumphs of American working women, done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 20th day of September, 2022.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Good morning, good morning. So glad you guys are here. Please address the board.
Good morning, commissioners and Chairman Starkey. Denise Nicholas, Chair of the Pasco County Commissioner on the Status of Women. I am very honored to be here on this amazing day. We're very excited to be here. One way that the Pasco CSW is helping to promote women in the workplace is by creating a women-owned business list, and Jean Nathi would like to talk more to it. She's in the power behind it.
It's a great idea.
Good morning. Jean Nathi, I represent District 1, Commissioner Oakley's district, and as a woman-owned business for over 20 years in Pasco County, we, I took the lead on compiling a list of women-owned businesses in Pasco, and we're slowly adding to that. Every month, we've got way over 100 women-owned businesses, and we're actually breaking them down into categories where we can help promote the women throughout the year, promote their businesses, whether it's healthcare, or salons, or, you know, just different categories, kind of focus on that. There's hopefully still a link on our county website on the CSW page where, if you're a woman-owned business, you can go in and register.
Nice.
To be, to be put on the list. We're going to check on that, because we understand that the website got updated recently in a couple.
I bet they're checking right now.
Yeah, a couple weeks. So hopefully, that link is still there, because that's a neat, a neat way to, you know, register if you're a woman-owned business in Pasco County. We also did a meet and greet with Commissioner Oakley in District 1 over Cafe Cocopelli's, where we, we gathered women together and we networked. And then we also had a meet and greet with Newport Ritchie at the.
At the St. Louis.
Pointe St. Louis.
Yes. Yeah, and that was attended very well. So that's kind of my speech on the directory.
Well, I'd love to host one at my, my place, so we'll work on that.
Yeah, this spring, we'll have another one in District 1.
Yeah.
Yes.
And this is a great opportunity for board members, if you know women-owned businesses, to send them to that link. We'll make sure that it's, it's posted so we can continue to work on that directory. And I'm sure we all know people who should be listed there, so.
Yes, and we also have a Facebook presence, too, where we try to promote different things throughout the year as well.
Wonderful. Anyone else want to speak to the board?
Well, good morning. I'm Kim Moore. I represent District 3, Catherine Starkey.
This is Dr. Moore.
Yes, I currently work for the school district. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Career and Innovative Programs, and I oversee all of our workforce development and STEM and STEAM schools. It's just an honor to stand here today as the largest employer in our county, the school district. The vast majority of our employees are, are women, and we want to make sure that we're giving them the opportunities to be the contributors to our county as we know they can be. So thank you for this proclamation today, and thank you for this honor, and thank you especially Commissioner Starkey for selecting me.
And I'm not going to let you off the hook so, so easy, because I just want you all to know, I pursued Dr. Moore for many years. She was the principal of my niece's school, at Middleton High School, and since we have a lot of military sitting in this room, could you just talk briefly about your military experience, because I bet a lot of people don't know what your background is.
Well, I am also a retired military officer. I had the privilege of serving 20 years in the United States Army, HOA. I retired as a Lieutenant Colonel, my rank, that was my rank. My expertise is nuclear, biological, and chemical warfare, weapons of mass destruction. So I'm a scientist by degree, which is why I oversee our STEM and STEAM programs in Pasco County. And yes, Commissioner Starkey's niece went to my school, and when she found out that I lived in Pasco, but drove to Hillsborough to work, she was like, you need to come and work in Pasco County. And she was very instrumental in making that happen. So I am very grateful to her, and I actually live in Starkey Ranch. And so, yes, we will be hosting an event at the Starkey Market in the near future, so get ready.
And you get extra bonus points with your last name as well, so.
You know, and it's a great last name.
Isn't it a great last name?
That I married into and blessed to have, so.
That's right.
She also married a veteran and an engineer, and you know, I love my engineers, so.
And he is a retired Marine, but I married him and upgraded him to the Army family. But he is a Moore, so he had that going for him.
All right, let's come down and take a photo.
That's awesome.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry, one last thing. I apologize, Commissioner. And I actually proudly represent Vice Chair, Mariano's District 5. But we also wanted to use this opportunity to thank Cheryl Pollak for her services as the CSW Chair through the COVID years.
Ah, she did a great job.
Her strong leadership and love has brought us through and truly brought us in the right direction.
Yeah, what a great job you've done during that hard time.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Good to see you.
I'm fine, darling. Why don't you let him come on up?
I'm looking for you.
Okay, you go.
I know, you guys can pass me down.
Come over, please.
Slide in.
One, two, three. One more from here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Great seeing all of you.
Thank you.
She didn't mention she was a special counsel at Kennesaw with the chemical warfare.
She's got a killer resume.
Okay, I think we're on to the Rs. Is it, are we up to Keith? R105. R105.
Does that mean?
Yes, good.
That's what I thought.
And our screens are working just in time for you, so we can turn those back to the public if you'd like.
Madam Chair, members of the board, good morning. Keith Wiley, Director, Parks, Recreation, and Natural Resources. Before I read this title, I'm going to really just kind of want to do a quick opening and a quick recap on the parks' capital journey, if you will. Obviously, this has been something that we've been working on since 2015, when we had the master plan put together and approved by the board. Then, if you recall, in 2018, we had the general obligation bond to address deferred maintenance. And then between that time to present, we've been really working on basically tweaking the capital plan to make sure that it actually addressed all the highest unmet needs, and then started the impact fee study that I'm getting ready to present today briefly. And I just wanted the public to know that this is, this is not something that we've thrown together. It's been, it's been a long work and a very long journey to get here. It's kind of surreal, actually, to be presenting it, because I feel like I've been working on this project for five years. I would also like to thank the board for all their continued support. I think that the board and county administration has been very good to the Parks Department of Pasco County. We've seen tremendous gains, and for, on behalf of my team, I appreciate all the support. High-level theme for this is the capital plan that we're going to basically present in this, that's in this study, ultimately addresses the parks' needs for Pasco County through 2045. I think that's the takeaway message that I really want, want to start with, and more importantly, that it's a plan-based approach, which means that it's very specifically focused on projects. Okay? So where are we? So where are we today? Next slide, please. Where are we today is that we have a, a park impact fee that has not been changed since 2002. The current fee per sing- yeah, the current
Many years, if you've done the math.
The, the current fee is, for single-family is $891.82. For multifamily, it is $627 per unit. What are we trying to do? Basically, we're, we're really trying to kind of true up the fee. Ultimately, again, to Commissioner Starkey's point, we haven't changed this fee since 2002. We have to demonstrate extraordinary circumstances underneath the new statute. We have to demonstrate that in order to actually make the request to increase the fee beyond 50%. I think that you all on the board know that we've actually, it's, it's an easy demonstration. We've had unprecedented growth. We've been, we've been, we've all seen it. All the departments that actually work for county administration and you, we've all seen that. So the other theme of this project is that the majority of the capital plan is based off concurrency requirements, which I'll get to a little bit later. But again, cost of materials have increased, land values have increased, and the facility and the demands, I think, public comment, Mr. Mark was talking about the demands on fields. My team is inundated with requests for field use constantly. Pretty much all of our facilities are at capacity. So this, this proposal to increase the impact fee is really, is, is an effort to update all of those costs so we can actually do what we need to do. Next slide. This kind of just quickly recaps, in the comp plan, you have concurrency requirement that's triggered off population. Basically, to date, over the last 15 years, we've pretty much negotiated around new, six district parks, the land for those facilities. We're seeking the money to actually get those facilities built. Next slide. So what are the numbers? So originally, when we went out to the consultant, we said, we're kind of behind, so we really want to get this done in the next 15 years, so we set a horizon of 2035. I'm going to just jump right to the fee because I think that's the most important. The total capital cost, again, is around $266 million for a bunch of projects that I'll show you later. But if you set the horizon underneath Alternative One at 2035, that sets the fee at $4,800, $4,800, $4,800, $20.19, which is a pretty substantial increase, I'm not going to lie. After talking to stakeholders, next slide, what we did is we stretched the term out through 2045, which ultimately lowers the fee to $3,450.15 per unit. We're also recommending that we go away from multifamily and single-family and just settle on one dwelling unit. So this is the staff recommendation to date presented in front of you, and ultimately, what's in front of you to date to approve is the, the request is to basically trigger the process, to change the comp plan, to address the, to clean up the level of service per the impact fee study, and then follow that up with an LBC change that would ultimately result in the increases presented underneath Alternative Two. Next slide. After meeting with stakeholders and many of you and other, other folks that are concerned about this increase, what we're suggesting to do is something very similar to what the school board has done, which is a two-year phase-in. So up on the screen, what I have is I have the increases focusing on dwelling unit by year one and year two. So in year one, you would see the fee go to $2,426.82, and year two, you would get to the recommended $3,450.15. To the right, we have what those increases are by the existing categories, just for illustration purposes. Remember that if approved, the multifamily category goes away. The main reason for that is that through reviewing all the data, we really didn't see much of a difference between single-family and multifamily individuals per dwelling unit. So to simplify accounting, I know my fiscal manager would appreciate that, and so would everyone in, in development services that has to collect the impact fees, we're recommending that we just, you know, go down to that single-family, or excuse me, one dwelling unit. What are we going to get? What's in the capital plan? Next slide. So this is, remember, I talked about being very plan-based focused. This actually, there's one error on this. We broke this down into five, 10, and 15-year increments. The section that says ELAMP is actually in the study, in the materials that you have, it says natural resource-based infrastructure. That's basically, you know, what, that's basically improvements on ELAMP land or in regional wilderness parks, things like that that we can get done, and we broke those down into phases. So this is the one benefit, I think, to focusing on a plan-based approach, is when you shop around the plan, everyone knows what they're going to get for the actual fee. I think we received a lot of positive impact, a lot of positive input on that. It was very transparent, and I think that's ultimately what got us, I think, to this point, to presenting this proposal to you for consideration. Next slide. So what's next? If approved today, we have to do, we have to amend the comp plan to, to true up the level of service for the, the parks concurrency piece. And then we also, after that, I don't know if we can do this concurrently or not, I have to talk to the county attorney's office, but we have to do the land development code. So this is really just the starting point that will then set us down the path. There'll be public hearings and whatnot that we'll have to go through. But really, what we're asking for you today is to approve Alternative Two with the recommended fee of 34, $3,450.15 per dwelling unit. And as I understand in conversations with the county attorney's office, if the board selects that number, we can work through the phasing options as put on the screen earlier, or any other minor changes. The goal is to actually settle on the number, the cost of the plan, if you will, today. So with that, that's the end of my presentation. I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Commissioner Mariano?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Keith, I want to say, since you've come on board, you've done a phenomenal job helping with parks. Christina, your team, unbelievable, what you guys have done. So Kathy, you picked the right people to bring them up. Having said that, we've talked about Sun West funding, and that's going to be covered different parts of money, correct?
So you get, it's currently funded, all the capital improvements that we have discussed is currently funded.
Funded, okay.
But the natural resource-based piece could be allocated toward, toward improvements to a facility of that category, yes.
Okay. You're talking about doing a phasing of the fee to go from one number to the highest number.
Yeah.
I don't know what the board thinks, but if, I think, right now, if we're going to take all these homes that are coming in that want to get these services right now as well, I think we should not even do a phase-in, we should go right to the high number.
Well, I have a suggestion. Because, so I, I've lived here now 31 years, and I, I know I brought this up here before, but we have new commissioners here. So my husband and I were youth coaches for 25 years. I've got a D1 soccer player. I think the first fields that were added since I moved here 31 years ago was Starkey Ranch District Park, and there, it's not even done yet because we went for quality, not quantity, and which I totally am behind. The, the facility before that, the last park added was veterans and on, on the west side, and then we, then the next district park on the west side was, was Starkey. I mean, we are so far behind in providing facilities for our kids. My, my kids played Little League at Pine Hill. When was the, when was the next Little League complex built?
On, to your point, Commissioner, we're, I don't have all the dates because I don't have the institutional knowledge, but it's, it's been some time.
That was, Holiday Rec was the last Little League field built on the west side. That was built before I moved here. So that was more than 30 years ago. So we now have a, a new Little League, what's the word for it, the Starkey?
Starkey Ranch Little League.
So we now have a Starkey Ranch Little League chartered with no fields, no fields. This weekend, Novi's here, thank you, Novi, I kicked the, the ball out for a, a game between his girls' team and one from, I think, from Alabama. We had another big soccer tournament going on over in Weston Chapel, and they, they didn't have enough fields. They had to send them out of county to go play on other fields because our fields were underwater, and there weren't enough turf fields. So the families that came here at the last minute from out of state, they had to be sent to other counties to play. I, I don't think the housing that's lived here, the new homes that have lived here for the last 30 years have really paid their fair share of the impacts of what we're dealing with. And I wanted to suggest that we not only consider this impact fee, which I think is, is sufficient, but I want to suggest that we go to a countywide MSTU so that the homes that have moved here in the last 30 years are also helping to pay for the impacts that their, their moving here have, have caused. And so, and I'm not talking about a big number. I'm talking $15 a year, something small, and I had asked staff to get me some numbers, and I don't, I don't know if they gave them to you because I haven't gotten them yet, but do you have any information on what a, say, $15, $20 MSTU countywide would look like?
So based on the logic that you're, that you know, that you're following, what we did was we took the projects that would have, should have been built, let's just say, the ones that we're behind on in terms of growth. It's around $96 million. I have not received those direct calculations back from OMB, but you can draw some conclusions on some of the stuff that we've presented recently. For example, I think the jail-go bond or the jail bond was less than 20-something dollars a household. Now, property values are, you know, have increased, and therefore that ultimately impacts what it is. But I think it depends on what you're looking for, but I, unfortunately, I don't have those numbers to present to you. I, I would ask that, since this is going to require numerous public hearings through the comp plan and the land development code change, that, that maybe we work, I've also talked to Mr. Cabal about this, that maybe we work through that time and try to get that information and present it back. So we have some actual numbers that, quite honestly, I don't want to, I don't want to mention a number up here if it's not, if it's not correct.
This, this is how other counties pay for their parks, and I don't think it should be a high number. I think it should be a number that 10, $10 to $20. It's bondable, and we can start building stuff right away. Commissioner Oakley?
Keith, when I came here six years ago, Parks and Rec were behind by, was it millions of dollars, or was it
Ten.
There were years back, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to remember that date, and I can't remember it right now, but the fact of it is, is for that six years, you've been behind. But during COVID, he caught up a lot of maintenance that, that he got closer on because the fields were closed and we're not using them, while we're able to go ahead and do some of that work. So are we still behind like we were before, or are we just starting new projects because of our growth?
Good, I have two answers to that. So yes, you're correct, we were behind. The initial conversation that we had was we were behind on deferred ma- we called it deferred maintenance at the time. It was a backlog of $25 million. So there's always a reoccurring maintenance cost that happens every year. That's basic operations. So I do think we've caught up on some of the deferred maintenance. I do think we still have after that, that was like the worst of the worst, right? We said, hey, at a minimum, we have to address this or we're going to close facilities. So the public supported that, that was amazing. We still are sitting on, working with county administration and OMB on how we address stuff that maybe didn't qualify as the worst of the worst but was still pretty bad, that's going to come online soon. And that would be, you know, that's around $3.2 million a year in average of facilities replacement. So I don't want to call that deferred maintenance, let's just call it, Mr. Cabal, I don't remember what you called it earlier, but operation expenses, replacement, you know, we both have different terms that we use in different businesses, but the end, the end, the end goal is, is the same, is that you have stuff that's aging that needs to be replaced. So that's the maintenance side of stuff. The, the other piece is, is just dealing with the growth, of which in my presentation, I talked about. Actually, can I, can I show a graphic real quick because I think this will be very telling? Is there any way I can share a graphic? I had mentioned that there's six district parks through concurrency that we've addressed. So it's really twofold, Commissioner. It's the maintenance side, which, again, the board has been very supportive. We've seen significant increases in the operating budget. But when you see this graphic, I think it tells the story. It's the combination of the growth element plus the maintenance piece. What I'm presenting today is really just about the capital growth piece. It's not, it's not attempting to even discuss maintenance concerns at this point in time. I should have talked to you about this before, earlier. I apologize. Maybe it's not as important.
While he, while he's doing that, I'm in agreeance with the fact that we continue this conversation and
Yes.
You get the numbers you need and bring them back to us, and I look forward to seeing those. Any, any way that it can ease load on our citizens, you know, we got to be very mindful of everything that calls for it and things of that nature, too. We get to be mindful of what you put on your citizens to help take care of, so.
Absolutely.
But I think, I think it's the right thing to get those numbers and come back, and I think it'll give us a good look at something, maybe we can do that'd be better than what we got there, so.
Madam Chair, just a quick question.
Mr. Moore?
Thank you, ma'am. Guesstimate of when Connerton might be able to come online?
So if, if this, so Commissioner Mariano mentioned not interested, not being interested in the phase-in. All I can do is tell you that we generate around $3 million a year now. If a district park costs $25 million, you can do the math on that, it'll take some time before we'll have enough revenue to, to make that happen. If this fee in place, it gets put into place, that is, that project is one of the major projects in the first five-year window that we would try to do.
Yeah, just because of the, as we know where the growth is, and the majority of the growth being, a lot of it, you know, it's the central Pasco area. We're seeing more on the west side now, too, but
Yeah.
Just to help relieve those Tulanda Lake parks
Absolutely.
And Westy Chapel District Park, because so many of those people go over there, right? So if Connerton comes online, that's going to make, yeah, it'll, you know, like you mentioned before, Commissioner Starkey and, and Chairman Starkey and Commissioner Oakley mentioned it, you know, it's just, it's better quality of life, right? You don't have to stay in the, stay in the car for 25, 30 minutes to take your kid to rec soccer practice. I think a rec soccer practice, I'm going to, like, be able to ride my bike there.
You, you've just teed me up for my neck, for this, I have to just take the moment. If you look at the screen, so this is something we worked on a few years ago, but it's basically our service area. So everything in blue is an existing facility in the terms of the service area, the polygons. Everything in red is what we haven't built yet that would be tied to this funding request. So if you can imagine the actual red polygons going away, that's the area of service that we're not addressing, to Commissioner Moore's point. That means someone's driving an unnecessary amount of time to get to one park to another. So, you know, I've been saying this for a while, parks are essential, you know, public infrastructure, they, they, they warrant the investment, so.
Madam Chair, one last question.
Yep.
Thank you, ma'am. VOPH, that big park, the super park, supposedly, if I'm not correct, the buildout of VOPH is supposed to be able to sustain that park when it comes, eventually when it comes to maintenance, but the capital needed, that's going to be, you know, until you see enough rooftops, you're not going to have enough capital generated from impact fees to build that park, right? But, but at the same time, aren't those rooftops the ones that are supposed to be the one, the main contributors to that super park?
So there, couple, couple points on that. So the VOPH park is 85 to 90% funded. That was, that was through this last budget, yeah, through ARP, so we're fortunate to get started on that project, hopefully this fall. And I, the actual surcharge, Mr. Goldstein can speak to this, but the surcharge attached to that is, was intended to pay back both the park facility piece but the land piece for the original takedowns.
Okay. Okay, got you. So it was almost, we almost, it was almost a loan?
Yes, yeah. It was a loan against the district, if you will, from, actually from
Okay.
The park impact fee land balance.
So, Mr. Goldstein, I'm going to let you jump in, but so it sounds to me like, okay, so now those, the surcharges will go to pay back?
The land portion.
Okay.
Just the land portion. Yeah, it's a little tricky.
Keith got it right. It's, it's only paying back the land portion of the, of that acquisition. The facility portion will be funded through other means, as Keith mentioned, through the federal funding that we received.
Okay, so when, so when that, eventually then, when that's built out, those funds will go into the kitty, so if there's another park that, you know, needs those funds, that will help subsidize
That is correct.
The shortfalls possibly. Let's say you need another one in West Pasco, for example.
I think he's got that all built into his, his planning.
So in that zone, so Commissioner, in that zone, it would refund, it would replenish the, the fund balance on the east side, so any project that was on the east
Two rivers.
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
Two rivers would be an example.
I know sometimes we borrow, we get a borrow from Peter Payfall, same time, right?
We do, we're trying, yeah. We'd like, we'd like not to do that in the future. Again, the accounting team doesn't appreciate that.
And, and don't forget, and I don't even know if you have it in here, Keith, is we're looking at another property that we're trying to purchase that will be on the, that will have a boat ramp
Yes, yes.
In an area that has no parks because it was built a long time ago. But I, I also, I want to say, you know, we're talking about the youth sports, and like I said, I'm, I got grandkids playing hockey, soccer, everything. But I also am a big user of parks, and I'm not going out there to play soccer. I want to be a user of a park, and as we have many, I guess I turned sixty-five last week, so maybe I'm a senior citizen, I don't know. Middle-aged citizen, as far as I'm concerned.
They told me, they told me at fifty-one, I can go to the senior games, so if you're calling me a senior citizen, yeah, you are, too.
I like using parks. I ride my bike in Starkey Wilderness Park. I ride the trail over there at the Coastal Ankle Trail. I, you know, it's not only about our youth, it's about our older youth, like me.
Yeah.
And so we have a lot of needs, and I look forward to seeing what we can do, Commissioner Mariano, with the combination, because with the combination like that, we can get started quicker, because you can't bond impact fees, correct?
So you can bond impact fees. The problem with bonding impact fees is that you have to basically insure them
Yeah.
because it's not a stable revenue source.
Right.
But if you're, the market, we have an issue with the market.
Right.
Market declines, we have a pickle.
So you end up, you end up, while it is a legitimate revenue source, you almost always end up pledging something else to get a better interest rate.
Interesting, okay.
And you know, if the market slows down and not as many people move here, we don't get as much money, but we've built thousands of homes in the last twenty years, and where's that money coming from? Commissioner Mariano?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Keith, one of the things you mentioned before, and I just want to make sure we get it clear, apartments are not going to pay the same as a single residential family home, correct?
So we're going to, we're going to go to one dwelling unit, so, yes, they will.
Okay, that's, I think that's a great add. I also think that, you know, we've got a lot of parks to do, and Commissioner Oakley, as you said, the catching up from years before, doing a lot of good things, the go bonds going through has helped. And I think down the road, we can look at that MSTU as well, but I think we've got a lot to do right now. The, I think we should put the no phasing in, go right to the top dollar number and keep it there. That'll help us get all the other parks we want for the rest of the county.
So here's my problem with that, and why I thought of the other, is because it's the future resident paying for the miss, miss, or the underfunding of the past. And I'm not sure that's fair.
That's, well, that's.
That's why I'm, I'm for.
That's not, that's not accurate, because you wouldn't be able to do the impact fee if that was the way you were funding it. So an impact fee by its very definition can only pay for new growth.
Right.
You have to come up with another source.
That's what I'm talking about, MSTU.
Yeah. But you have to come up with another source to do backlog and to do maintenance. You can't use the impact fee for that. So to say that new residents are paying for that backlog is not a true statement.
Okay, there is a backlog, no doubt. We need, where are we getting the funds to pay for the backlog if we can't use impact fees?
I think, I think what I'll do.
How about that?
I'll take direction from the board.
That's a better way to put it, yes.
I think I have direction from the board to come up with a solution.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick wants to say something.
I have multiple things since I've been writing them down. So first, it's very important that we do invest in our youth. It's also very important that as we make and continue to make Pasco a premier county, is premier throughout the entire county. As the new fields are coming in, they are premier. As the older fields are older and were sufficient when they were originally built, and I know Keith is working on improving these fields to make them premier, we need to continue to make the older fields premier. If we only had the specific amount of citizens back then and those fields were sufficient for them, we have all of the new growth that is coming in that has to utilize the older fields right now. So we do need the impact fees to have the new fields. Now, sorry, thank you. So for the past thirty years, citizens have been paying taxes. They have been paying for the Parks Department through the general funds and through the geo bond. So saying that the citizens that have been here for thirty years haven't been paying wouldn't be completely true, because they, we do have, we have been paying taxes through property taxes and the geo bonds and other taxes. In addition, we are looking at other avenues coming up with the P-VAS programs and other MSTUs that we're going to be working on. Right now, we have a housing crisis, especially for our senior populations, our elderly, our disabled, and everyone else. When looking at a street and one person on that street is paying twelve hundred a year in taxes, but the house down the street sells for triple the amount, and now that house is bringing in triple the amount of taxes, if one person's paying a hundred dollars a month, but the same person on the street that's moving in is paying two hundred and fifty dollars a month, that's an additional one hundred and fifty dollars just from that home. And speaking of, if we do have to look at a new P-VAS system or MSTUs to cover different items, we are, and if we increase the taxes by a hundred and fifty a year, that's one thing, but if you're increasing taxes by a hundred and fifty a month by people, seniors that may have been moving from one place to another, or they haven't had a home, they don't have portability programs to move into the new home. So the taxes are increasing. The growth, we do need for it to pay for itself, and this is also, I'm going to jump topics, is another reason it's imperative that we work with the schools and the schools start opening their playgrounds. We have four schools right now that are opening their playgrounds after school and on weekends. As citizens, we pay our taxes, and looking at the impact fees, we pay just as much in impact fees to our school system as we pay to the county. And at that point, we should be able to utilize the playgrounds instead of having to recreate and duplicate the wheel of all of these additional playgrounds. We should be utilizing the ones we already have, especially the tracks and the fields and everything else that we have, instead of having to pay all this extra money to duplicate them.
Thank you. Okay.
Chair, just a quick response to that. So Commissioner Fitzpatrick, you bring up a good point. This is, this proposal underneath the existing ordinance, it does not support the funding of neighborhood parks. I know that that's a hot topic, and I do think that we need to continue to work with the school board to address where neighborhood park, where there are neighborhood park deficiencies in older communities. We already have mapped out that exercise. I've had a couple initial meetings with the county attorney's office and the school board on how we make that happen. Luckily, we have a master agreement in place to, to at least start that process. I think that the important thing to the distinction here is that the capital projects presented in this plan are, from a scale perspective, completely different than the neighborhood park element, which I think are critically important, but we can address through the, through the plan of trying to work with the school board to open some of their facilities. So that is also an ongoing project, though, but very good point.
Thank you. And then also, we do have to be mindful of our citizens that have been here for thirty years, because their taxes are going up indirectly because of the property's assessed values. So we have to be mindful to try to keep the taxes lower for them, because if you look, if someone purchased, a new citizen is purchasing a new home down the street from one or the other, they're paying two hundred and fifty dollars a month in taxes, plus what, another hundred and fifty insurance? So you can't even get into a home without paying four hundred, and a lot of our seniors are on social security that are making twelve hundred a month, and taxes alone are a quarter of their income. So we just have to be mindful on which taxes are increased or moved around.
Are we going to try and get 106 in before lunch, or are we going to bring that back?
Do it.
Because this is coming back to us, so.
But you need a motion.
Don't move.
I want to make, but I, my motion would be to, the thirty-four fifty fifteen is the high, the high number phased in, right? I'm making a motion to support staff's recommendation without a phase in, but to go directly to three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and fifteen cents.
Wait, is that, I'm sorry, is that the final number? Because I thought the twenty-two.
That's the high number, yes. The final number that gets phased in. We're not going to do the phase in, though.
It would be two to.
Thirty-four fifty fifteen.
I will second that.
Was that, was that a phase in over two years?
No phase in is my motion, though.
I know, I just want to hear from Keith.
So the, so in conversation with the industry, they did support a phase in approach similar to what the school board did for their impact fees. That's why that's been presented to you. Obviously, it's your discretion to, to make whatever recommendation you want.
Yeah, I'm more inclined to do my idea, which I'm going to try and keep, keep moving here, is to keep that impact fee where it is and add countywide MSTU. So I'm not going to support your motion. We are already the seventh highest impact fee laden home in the state. It's going to make homeownership even more expensive here in the county. So I just think we need a two-pronged approach. So, but I'll call the question unless anyone else has any discussion.
I think the new growth still needs to be paying for itself.
I'll call, I'll call the vote.
I'd like to support an idea we continue and go to the fact that we look at the MSTU against what he's bringing.
Then you would vote no on his, on his motion unless you want to amend your motion.
Madam Chairman, if I, if I can consult with David for a second. If they go forward with a non-phased in approach, they always, that's going to be the worst. They can always phase it at the time of ordinance adoption, correct?
Yes.
So you may, the motion that's on the floor, you may want to proceed with, because once you take public comment, you could, you could always phase it in your final adoption.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I get, I don't want us to hold them up to move forward, because if we hold them up, they're not going to be able to move forward. They can bring back what they want.
No, but we can have another motion.
You could, we could, you've got, how long is this going to take you again?
Four to six months or maybe longer.
You've got a long time to bring back other ideas. So I'll call the question.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. All right, then we'll keep working on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, I support an increase, but I want, my preference is a blend, so we can get working right away. Okay, sorry, it's lunchtime, unless you can do it really quick? Shall we go ahead and do this?
Do it.
Okay, because I think this is going to go pretty quick.
Good afternoon. Kathy Pearson, Assistant County Administrator, Public Services Branch. We're bringing back to you today, I always have the PowerPoint, but we'll make it quick, the inter-local agreement for the Tampa Bay Area Regional Transit Authority called TBA. We're presenting you today with a recommendation that we delay this until January. The total fee for this would be ninety-five thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars. That's based on seventeen cents, Flores' statute one eighty-six point nine oh one, per capita of the population. I think some of the challenges we've been seeing throughout our five-county Hernando, Hillsborough, Manti, Pasco, and Pinellas, has been a little bit of some challenges with it, TBA board, we'll put it that way. And we'd like to give them, hopefully, some time to possibly visit us in January with some definitive plans and keep the funding in the budget, so.
I am, as your TBA member, I'm in support of, I'm in support of this idea that we kind of wait and see what happens after November and into January.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
And just a couple comments, and I want to thank Chair Starkey for being such an advocate for Pasco County. Shows you how bored I am in life sometimes, that between Andy and I, we watch some of the TBA meetings and the workshops. We actually do. I know, it sounds crazy, but we do. So we saw a lot of this back and forth going on. And I did speak with Commissioner Holcomb, soon to be a state legislator. He reached out to me, I think, two days ago, maybe it was the beginning of, end of last week, I think it was. He did state that now they're not going to support it. They made a motion, we watched that as well, just to confirm it, they're not going to do it. But I think, like you mentioned, at the workshop recently, I think out of twenty-six votes, was it twenty, sixty-five percent were not confident, thirty-one percent were reasonably confident, four percent were very confident. I just found it kind of weird that, I thought the Tampa Bay partnership was the one that wanted to put that workshop together, but they didn't come?
Well, we picked a day, well, it turned out that Benita couldn't be there. But there's ongoing things happening, and so I think it's wise to take the steps that were.
Oh, I agree, I think you should, but I, you know, I want to thank you for being such an advocate for Pasco County.
Oh, man, talk about frustration.
You go back to when I was on it, when I first came on at fourteen, and it was back then, it was Mayor Kreisman from St. Petersburg, and we were starting to talk about BRT and it coming to Wesley Chapel. And then we said, well, why, it wasn't coming to Wesley Chapel, why isn't it coming to Wesley Chapel? He wondered why it wasn't coming to downtown St. Pete. We finally got to a point where that's where it was going to be, but we know what's happened since then.
Well, if you don't have a player in the middle.
Right, well, that was going to say, so.
Things fall apart.
But I have a sneaky suspicion that TBA will be going bye-bye by our legislators come next session. I would probably put a wager on that, if anybody wants to take me up on it.
Stay tuned for.
You say I'm not a betting man, but I am, so.
Stay tuned for another direction in a different way.
Right.
That's all I can say.
Right, I got you, I got you. I support, I'll make the motion.